Hawkins County Schools, represented by the Board of Education and the Administration, have drafted a resolution in opposition to vouchers. Before we get into the discussion of vouchers, I would like to open the table for a motion on the resolution.
One more question. That's working.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Now we can start the discussion. Matt, would you like to read the resolution out?
Sure. Hawkins County Resolution Against School Vouchers. Whereas the Hawkins County School Board's, School Board of Education is responsible for providing a local system of public education, and whereas the Constitution of the State of Tennessee requires that the Tennessee General Assembly provide for the maintenance, support, and eligibility standards of a system of free public schools, with no mention of the maintenance or support of private schools, and whereas the State of Tennessee through work of the Tennessee General Assembly, the Tennessee Department of Education, the State Board of Education, and local school boards has established nationally recognized standards and measures for accountability in public education, and whereas the Hawkins County Department of Education is a cornerstone of the local community, providing education services to all students regardless of background, need, or ability, and whereas the Hawkins County Department of Education is an educational community that serves a student population of roughly sixty-two hundred pre-kinders through 12th grade students with varying backgrounds and needs, and whereas the Hawkins County Department of Education offers an array of specialized programs including special education services, career and technical education training aligned with local workforce needs, and English language learning, which are invaluable for meeting both individual needs and the Tennessee Constitution's requirement of a free and public education, and whereas vouchers eliminate public accountability by channeling tax dollars into private schools that do not face state-approved academic standards, do not make budgets public, do not adhere to open meetings and records laws, do not publicly report on student achievement, do not face public accountability requirements contained in major federal laws, including special education and English second language services, and whereas vouchers leave many students behind, including those with the greatest needs because vouchers channel tax dollars into private schools that are not required to accept all students or offer special services they may need, and whereas vouchers give choices to private schools, not students and parents, since private schools decide if they will accept vouchers, how many and which students they want to admit, and the potentially arbitrary reasons for which they might later dismiss a student, and whereas such lack of accountability is both fiscally irresponsible and inherently unfair to the thousands of dedicated teachers and administrators who have devoted their careers and lives to the improvement of public education system within this state, and who toil daily to meet the accountability standards imposed on them by the State of Tennessee, and whereas the fulfillment of this constitutional guarantee is heavily reliant upon adequate state funding, which is vital for equipping schools with the necessary resources to serve the various needs of Tennessee students, and whereas the Hawkins County Board of Education is committed to maintaining local control over its schools, ensuring that they are reflective of the community's needs and values, and whereas educational savings accounts threaten the district's ability to maintain the quality of its educational offerings as ESAs would divert state funds to private actors and disrupt local control of education. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Hawkins County Board of Education hereby expresses its opposition to the Governor's Educational Freedom Act, as well as any other voucher or education savings account legislation due to the detrimental impacts these programs will have on our students, schools, and community, and be it further resolved that the Hawkins County Board of Education urges Tennessee's General Assembly to consider the effects that education savings account will have on local school districts and to instead seek out additional ways to support and strengthen public schools throughout the state.
Thank you, Mr. Hickson. If the Board would allow me, if any of our visitors had any questions, can we allow them to ask some questions if they have any? Just raise your hand and say your name if you have any questions or comments toward vouchers while you're in front of the board. Board members, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't.
Good, everybody's good? Well, I'm not. If you will allow me, it's time to make my comments known. Is, from my knowledge of being on this board, for a number of years now, I've gotten to understand public education. The first meeting I ever went to as a school board member was in 2012. First thing I ever voted on was vouchers. Didn't know anything about it at the time. I've been following this since 2012. I've seen a lot of changes come in public education over these years. So if you will allow me, I'm going to give you my perspective of public education in the State of Tennessee. Public education is not an easy task by any means. Public education is dictated to by the Department of Education. I'm going to go a step further with that. Who dictates to the Department of Education is the state legislature. So moving forward to get to the point where we're at now, where we're sharing tax dollars with private entities, that's not on the same playing field as public education, and held to the same standards, requirements, and reports that we have to do for the accountability. I would assume that it's very easy for a private school to choose whichever students they want, like it says in the resolution. They have the ability to choose who they want. Public education, if I'm not mistaken, by the Constitution of the great State of Tennessee says a free and public education. Free and public education. We have to take everyone. We don't have the luxury to pick and choose the students that we're educating. It's a daunting task. There's a lot of rules and regulations. So has this been created over the years to help public education? And I have to say this, would it be a means to hinder public education to some extent? Let that sink in a minute. Go back to the chain of command. Department of Education oversees public education. Who oversees the Department of Education? The state legislature. Very difficult, very difficult to understand public education and requirements. With that being said, I'm going to end my comments with this statement. And this is not a reflection of the Board, this is my personal, uh, comment. And if the Board members agree with me, I would appreciate it to speak up. Governor Lee thanks so little of his request for a majority vote of the representatives of this state. He is unable to allow his bill to be presented without attaching financial punishment to all counties in this state who do not show a vote in favor of his action to degrade public education under strong-arm tactics. I ask that Governor Lee send his bill to the representatives on its own merits and equal playing field by holding private schools to the same standards prescribed to public education. Short and sweet. Don't think it's fair. I do not think it's fair that our governor has attached other items to this bill, such as disaster relief. There's no business in this bill. We're talking about education, we're not talking about disaster relief. Like I said, chain of command, state legislature, Department of Education. And all in my comments there. Thank you.
Mr. Christian, can I weigh in just before you vote? Not, and I realize that I don't have a vote, but I want our staff and I want our community to hear my concerns with this, with the board. Number one, I'm a firm believer that competition is good. It gives, it drives the best in all of us.
I agree.
Public education is not fearful of competition with private schools, charter schools, home schools. We live and breathe alongside of them currently right now. However, when the field is made in a competition setting to be unfair and weighted toward one opponent, that competition can then be detrimental to either side. And what we're dealing with right now is a proposed bill that will set highly unfair standards, unequally aimed at public education remaining high, and some of the highest accountability in the nation as they currently stand. Our spring test, our benchmarks, our end-of-course tests, and how we are graded as a school system, individual grades, individual schools, and as, and each LEA, Local Education Agency, is some of the toughest in the state. Some of our certificated teacher evaluation system is highly regarded as some of the toughest in the nation. The team evaluation takes into consideration how each teacher's students do, how they perform, and it's directly correlated to that teacher's evaluation. Very few other states have that correlation with student achievement and teacher evaluation scores. We value high standards in Tennessee. We have a long way to go in Hawkins County, but we're growing and we're getting there at a pretty good pace, I might add. Number two, we honor and support parent choice. When I came in 2018, starting in January of 2019, we opened Virtual School, and we have increased every year our offerings for vocational, CTE, and out-of-the-box programs that our students and parents can choose from within our public education system, requiring no additional tax dollars from the community. Accountability is very, very high for public education, yet in this current bill and last year's bill, there is nothing that's required for private schools who take the same funding or that will take the same funding. In fact, I want to read you what one of the Governor's representatives responded to one of my concerns about this. I asked specifically about the same measures that Mr. Christian had mentioned a couple minutes ago, about the high standards and the standardized testing that public education has to provide and live by in grades two through 12, and her response was, "The governor feels that parent satisfaction should be the top measure of accountability." We survey our parents every year. We survey our students. We survey our teachers and our staff members, and while we value their satisfaction and their comments and their beliefs about our school, we additionally have a very high set of standards that we have to provide through assessments and other measures as mandated by the State of Tennessee. All of those are not required in this current bill for anybody taking the voucher money, any institution that receives those additional dollars. We take every single student that comes to our schools for enrollment, students that have highly specialized educational needs, students that may be handicapped cognitively or physically, students that have had extreme behaviors in the past in other school systems. We look right at those records and we say welcome, because we have to, and that is the right thing to do. Private schools that take these dollars will not have to do that. There's no mandate. We also live in TISA now, is how we're funding. TISA is by the student funding model. It means every student that comes in generates a set of dollars that is helping the local education agency provide for those students' needs, to meet those needs, whether they're academic, social, emotional, behavioral, you name it. When they say that we won't reduce public education funding, and yet we're faced with students walking out the door and taking that funding to another institution, how long do you think that will last? There's going to be a shortfall at some point. There can't be an endless pot of money in the sky that this is drawn from. And I've never seen a formula in any of the voucher bills, or any of the plans, or any of the fiscal notes. In fact, the last fiscal note listed it at over $200 million starting out, or close to that for the state. How long do we think that's going to last? They say they're not going to touch public education, but yet the dollars attached to each student that leaves public education goes with them. A common person that's not familiar with education funding has a very basic question of how does that continue and how does the public education system not suffer financially because of that down the road? As taxpayers, there's going to be a point where currently we're funded 70% through federal and state, 30% local. How long before those shortfalls start hitting the local level and we have to come to the commissioners, to our stakeholders, and say we need more funding? Because out of sixty-two hundred students, we're five hundred square miles that we serve. If we lose two hundred students and they represent students from each of our schools, we may not be able to do things like reduce staffing, because if you take two or three students out of Mooresburg, you still need one teacher per grade level. So we can't automatically just reduce staffing when we lose students. Rural systems are those that are going to be hurt the most by this voucher bill as currently written. Ask yourself, and Mr. Christian pointed this out, I know I've had conversations with several other board members, but ask yourself why the governor is attaching this to relief funding in a special session. I've stood in front of many of you at town hall meetings, those are not comfortable things to do. We've discussed school closings. We've discussed changes to busing, where people were just flat-out ticked before. But we have an obligation to be transparent. We have an obligation to answer questions, to stand in front of you all. Where's the accountability with this? I don't see it. And until I can see it, I can't support it. As I stated before, I'm one of the few superintendents that you can probably ask that supports choice, and I've been ridiculed for that. But I do believe parents ought to choose, but I think the playing field that they're choosing from ought to be fairly based and equal across the board, and it ought, and the same accountability standards ought to be held at the same regard for both institutions There are folks that were significantly hit with Hurricane Helene. I'm personally offended that our governor would move forward and attach leverage on our mayor and six others in northeast Tennessee, and basically, according to emails I've received, basically say, "I sure hope you support this if you want funding for reliefs down the road currently and down the road for your county." I can understand why our mayor signed something like that. Can you all? His obligation is to protect our financial footing and to keep taxes and the impact of taxes off of your plate. He was the last one to sign it. Dr. Bailey and I went and talked to him a couple days after he signed it, and I completely understand why he felt the leverage to do so. And I promised him that we would continue, no matter our opinion on this or any other issue, we would continue that good working relationship, because that's critical in a community such as ours. So again, this is not an anti-voucher stance on the part of Director of Schools. This is, things, these are things that do not make sense, and it's at the expense of public education, and it's at the expense of making us look bad in order to get it passed. Those are things that don't sit well with me, and I'll get off my soapbox, but it's important for me to voice those concerns. I don't weigh in on this board. This has no weight on the vote. I'm the one and only Board of Educational employee. But this is wrong.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
I firmly agree with what Director Hickson and Chairman Christian have said regarding the vouchers. I totally agree. I think the voucher bill, if he's going to, Governor Lee's going to present it, it should stand alone. He should not put in there that it's dependent upon Hurricane Helene relief for those counties and people that so desperately need it. Another caption in that bill that hasn't been mentioned yet is, eighty, the governor was going to take 80% of the online gambling profits and use those to share with schools in Tennessee to help upgrade and maintain aging facilities. I think the age, the average age right now of school facilities in our state is sixty years, and you can only imagine, I mean, my house at thirty years, there's something all the time breaking, water, the roof needs fixing. There's something going on all the time. And imagine a school building so much larger than a home trying to provide heat, air conditioning, safety measures, plumbing, electricity, all those types of things factor into the maintenance of a building. And I personally find it very wrong that those two items are attached to the voucher bill. Let the voucher bill stand on its own and let people vote on it on its own without bringing in these, these other things that our state so desperately needs.
I agree. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say to you, Mr. Hickson, thank you for supporting school choice. I personally am a homeschool mom. I grew up in the Hawkins County school system, but have chosen to homeschool our children for a variety of reasons, not many, but I have many, many people that I love dearly that are in the public school system, and in the private school system, and in the homeschool system. And I believe as a homeschooler and just as, just a taxpayer in general, that state funds should stay with state schools, 100%. State funds have no business in home schools, in private schools. Private schools are meant to be private. That way they can educate those children the way that they feel that they need to be educated. State funds do not need to be at home schools, so that we as homeschoolers have that freedom to educate our children how we feel best for our children. And I'm completely against this, just from as a taxpayer, if nothing else, as a taxpayer, because I know school funds bring in school regulations, and as a homeschooler, I don't want those regulations upon us, and I know that private schools probably don't want those regulations upon them, that's why they're private. But I do respect the school system, it has a lot of people that are in the school system, and I respect them and love them and want the best for their education that they can have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeanette. I have a few questions, and maybe you can help answer these for me. If vouchers were based, does this voucher money from the state, does it go to homeschools? Homeschools?
I'm not 100%. I've heard possibly at some point, one school voucher, I'm not 100% sure if this particular one does. If it did, I would not take it.
One of the last year's versions, remember there were continuing bills last year at one point, several, from the House and from the Senate side, and I do believe that several of those mentioned qualifying homeschools. There wasn't any language that I saw that what dictated a qualifying, whether it was an umbrella state-run or an organization-run homeschool versus individual homeschool, and then typically differentiation between the two. In the State of Tennessee right now, any parent can petition of their local education agency and state that they're homeschooling, and declare that, and then turn in a calendar, instructional year calendar, and just inform the school district of what that parent is doing with that student or students. As long as they submit that, they are approved to homeschool. With this, there are potential regulations, because if they make allowances to recognize homeschools as one of the entities that can receive these funds, she is correct, they will probably come with some restrictions and mandates with that.
Oh, funny that, especially the Education Freedom Act. Am I correct in that?
Freedom.
But you as a homeschool parent would be under regulations, but private schools aren't?
There's no freedom in the Homeschool Freedom Act. It takes freedom away. I'm a firm believer in that.
I got one more comment and a question, if I could. Doctor Bailey. Matt touched on this, but just to show you how serious this is for our teachers. Test schools are required, testing is required, but our teachers, our teachers, their jobs depend on how they're schooled, correctly?
For their evaluation, yes. Directly tied to the student, too.
And they could lose their job.
One of the qualifications for tenure is hitting a basic minimal standard over several years prior to being considered for tenure.
Now to clarify, a teacher has to go through an evaluation process every year, and if they're a level one, two, three, four, or five, five being a perfect teacher, but if you're a three, which, correct me if I'm wrong, that's why I mixed up Bailey to engage this part, is if you're a level three for three years in a row, what could happen to that teacher? Or if you want to, what, Matt answered it again?
Go ahead, Dr. Bailey, you started.
The teacher would not get tenure, would not be recommended for tenure, I think, and you can help me on this, at least it's like here, I think it's, we have five years.
Correct.
They have five years. First, we want to support them, to get them to a level where they can receive tenure. And Laura Lee has worked a lot on accountability, too, so she can channel as well, but again, at a level three, that's not a bad score. The students have made progress that they were expected to make with that level. But again, in order to get tenure, you have to, I want to think, a level four or five for two years. So they can still be employed, but... So they can still be employed, but without tenure.
Okay. Thank you for answering that. And here's my point to this. Here's my point. The factors involved in teaching in public education is a whole heck of a lot harder than private school. It's a heck of a lot harder than private school. What else can we say? It's not an evil, it's not a level playing field. Our teachers in public education in the state of Tennessee are fighting an uphill battle every day. But it's a choice. They choose to be teachers. We accept the challenges that are presented to us through the Department of Education. I s, that's where the rubber meets the road. Period. I think that's pretty strong of what's required of being a teacher, a minister, or a board member. We don't term students what? Matt said it already. So?
We, we even have programs that allow homeschooling students and private school students, depending on how they're enrolled and what they're enrolled in, to participate in their own school's extracurricular and sports activities. There's a process by that. We allow that by the board policy, we allow that, uh, we have quite a few homeschool students that come out and, and, and try out for sports, whether it's a swim team, football team, whatever the case is, if they live in charity's boundary and they're homeschooled and they're in good standing and they meet the requirements and they've applied ahead of time and met that criteria, they can try out just like any public school students can for those, um, if the parents can't provide for extracurricular offerings and they're a virtual student with us, we've offered that, that virtual program for now six years, they can go to their local high school, their own high school, and attend extracurricular courses. They can, they can try out for sports and participate in sports just as a in-class student does. We've bent over backwards and we're completely open to more ideas on how to create choice offerings for our parents within Hawkins County. We're not exclusive to public education being the only way that parents can go about educating their students. But I really think that instead of having something that's highly unfair forced down our throats, why not let us make some decisions locally and working with entities and bridging some of those gaps that are set up by state control and by rules that are unfair for one entity or another? If I was in a private school right now, I wouldn't, I would stay far away from the doctor's system because it's going to come with strings. Dr. Bailey and I came, went up to the state to testify last year, and it was funny because they were tech, they were testing the waters for getting rid of federal funding. Well, through that process, that committee made up of senators and congress representatives soon found out that the state of Tennessee has more requirements than the state do for public education and going about the business of public education. If I was a private school, I'd stay well away from this, and I'd say, "You know what? I know it comes with money, but I know there's strings down the road, and I want to make, I want to be able to make my own decision." When that bridge is crossed, you never can come back.
That's true. That is true. Okay. Any comments? You good? You good? All right. Again, any questions from the visitors? If not, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further debate? If none, Matt, let's throw a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Mr. Chris Christian.
Yes.
Debbie Shedd.
Yes.
Kathy Craddock.
Yes.
Anna Speaks.
Beth Metz.
Yes.
Orlando Benavides.
Yes.
And then Lima Gordo de Datsin.
Okay, that is a unanimous vote from the Hawkins County Board of Education on sending this resolution as written to the House. Anything else before this vote? If not, board adjutant.